November 18, 2024 Eugene City Council Public Hearing. Thank you for joining us in this hybrid meeting format. Anyone wishing to access the meeting can do so by watching the livestream available on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21, or by following the instructions listed for this meeting on the public webcast and meeting materials webpage. There are three public hearings on tonight's agenda. Please note that members of the public who sign up to testify may speak only on the topic that is the subject of the stated hearing. So listen carefully for the one we're calling. For those wishing to testify during the public hearing, please fill out a request to speak form available on our city's public webcast and meeting materials webpage. These request to speak forms will be used to generate the order of speakers and correctly enter speakers' names into the public record. And we'll accept those request to speak forms until 5:35. For those wishing to provide testimony by phone and are unable to complete the request to speak form online, press star nine and the last three digits of your phone number will be added to the speaker's queue. And then as a reminder, the council has a few meeting rules of conduct which include no flags, signs, loud or disruptive language, noise, or conduct that obstructs the business of the council. We are seeking to have a safe and respectful place for people to express their ideas and opinions and to be heard. You are always welcome to wave your hands in silent support. And then again, this is a full room. If you're not feeling well, we encourage you to join remotely instead of in person or to spread out to the extent that you can. And I believe we have some masks available in the front if you have been exposed or not feeling well yourself. And then final housekeeping order, in case of an emergency, we have an automatic external defibrillator right behind the staff there on the wall underneath the big screen. If that is needed, and in the case of an emergency exit, you can leave out the two glass doors going out onto the terrace or the back door, double doors out back into the hallway and out of the building. So with that, we are ready for the first public hearing. Comcast of Oregon Two, Inc., cable franchise extension. And I will turn to the city manager to introduce this topic.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a proposed ordinance extending Comcast cable television franchise agreement until December 31, 2025. The current extension provided Comcast and the city additional time to come to agreement on several issues while allowing litigation of the FCC cable order to complete. There are still unresolved issues to negotiate and unanticipated delays including franchise consortium, staff changes, and scheduling issues impacting progress. All parties, including Comcast, agreed to a one-year extension with a commitment to conclude negotiations as soon as possible. This proposed extension ordinance would only extend the term of the current franchise. All other franchise terms and conditions remain the same, including Comcast's obligation to pay franchise fees for use of the public right of way. Thanks.
Thank you. And I realize I'm two minutes ahead of schedule because we haven't quite finished the sign-up here. Is that right?
That's right, Mayor. But just an update, we have 15 speakers signed up total this evening, but none for this first topic so far, but I'll update you in two minutes when the form closes.
Okay, well, we'll just sit before I formally open the public hearing and let, see if anyone shows up. You are always welcome to wave your hands in silent support. And then again, this is a full room. If you're not feeling well, we encourage you to join remotely instead of in person or to spread out to the extent that you can. And I believe we have some masks available in the front if you have been exposed or not feeling well yourself. And then final housekeeping order, in case of an emergency, we have an automatic external defibrillator right behind the staff there on the wall underneath the big screen. If that is needed, and in the case of an emergency exit, you can leave out the two glass doors going out onto the terrace or the back door, double doors out back into the hallway and out of the building. So with that, we are ready for the first public hearing. Comcast of Oregon Two, Inc., cable franchise extension. And I will turn to the city manager to introduce this topic.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a proposed ordinance extending Comcast cable television franchise agreement until December 31, 2025. The current extension provided Comcast and the city additional time to come to agreement on several issues while allowing litigation of the FCC cable order to complete. There are still unresolved issues to negotiate and unanticipated delays including franchise consortium, staff changes, and scheduling issues impacting progress. All parties, including Comcast, agreed to a one-year extension with a commitment to conclude negotiations as soon as possible. This proposed extension ordinance would only extend the term of the current franchise. All other franchise terms and conditions remain the same, including Comcast's obligation to pay franchise fees for use of the public right of way. Thanks.
Thank you. And I realize I'm two minutes ahead of schedule because we haven't quite finished the sign-up here. Is that right?
That's right, Mayor. But just an update, we have 15 speakers signed up total this evening, but none for this first topic so far, but I'll update you in two minutes when the form closes.
Okay, well, why don't we'll just sit before I formally open the public hearing and let, see if anyone shows up.
Hello, Mayor. I can confirm we have no speakers for the first public hearing this evening.
Okay, perfect. So I will, but I'll formally open it, open the public hearing, and there are no speakers. So I will close the public hearing. And I don't know if there are any questions or comments from council since you haven't heard any testimony, but all right. So we'll move on to our second public hearing, middle housing remand. And I will again turn to the city manager to explain.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, the Eugene City Council is holding a public hearing to consider an ordinance re-adopting the city's middle housing code. Following its original adoption, the middle housing code was appealed and ultimately remanded back to the city to address compliance with statewide planning goal 11, which concerns public facilities and services. The council re-adopted the middle housing code earlier this year with additional findings, but that ordinance was also remanded. In the most recent remand, the Land Use Board of Appeals explained that the city can demonstrate that the middle housing code complies with goal 11 by adopting the sufficient infrastructure language from the state's middle housing model code. The proposed ordinance tonight addresses the remand by directly incorporating the sufficient infrastructure requirements from the model code to ensure that the higher density housing allowed by this ordinance will only be developed on lots or parcels with sufficient infrastructure, which includes water, wastewater, stormwater, and access. Tonight is a public hearing only and deliberations are scheduled for November 25.
Hey, thank you. I now open the public hearing and turn to staff for a list of speakers.
Thank you, Mayor. I need just another moment to get that list together.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. We have four speakers this evening. If you have signed up to speak via Zoom, please take this time to ensure that your screen name in Zoom includes your last name and matches the name you used to sign up to speak. If your screen name does not match, we cannot allow you to speak when it is your turn. I will announce two speakers' names at a time. When you are called to speak, please state your name and your ward or neighborhood, if known, before beginning your comments. If you are providing testimony via Zoom, when it is your turn, we will announce your name and allow you to speak. If you are announced as the next speaker and physically in the room, please move to the seat in the front row designated for the next speaker. When it is your turn, you may come to the podium. Please leave any bags you may have with you at your seat. If you have documents to give counsel, please place them in the basket near the podium. You will have two and a half minutes to speak. The timer will flash red when you have 15 seconds remaining to speak. Your microphone will be muted at the two and a half minute mark. Please note that the use of profanity is prohibited, and any instances of profanity will result in immediate termination of speaking privileges. Our first speakers this evening are Kathy Gang, followed by Karen Knidson. All right. I'm not seeing a Kathy Gang in Zoom. I'm going to move on to the next speaker. Kathy, if you are an attendee in Zoom, or if you're in the room, but if you're in Zoom, please change your name to match the name you used to sign up with. Right, Karen, I'm going to allow you to speak. Karen, go ahead when you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity to give testimony in support of your readoption of Eugene's middle housing code amendments. So many in the community are grateful to your commitment to housing affordability, diversity, and supply, and are looking forward to these code amendments being re-adopted and once again in place for our community's use. Eugene's middle housing code was a really important step towards addressing our housing and homelessness crisis, and we appreciate your leadership in that work. Every single meaningful measurable step matters in the work to address the housing crisis like the one that we face, and Eugene's middle housing code amendments are a great example of that work. Every community across this country, from our city to the county, to the state, to every part of our country, is working towards innovative policies that support housing diversity and increase production through things like middle housing zoning reforms. And Eugene has the distinction of being among the leaders in our country in this work, in both the process that we've pursued to these ends and the outcome from that work. So I want to thank you for your service, thank you for your dedication to this policy work, and both appreciate and encourage your readoption of the code. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Our next speaker is Kathy Gang, and she is now in Zoom, so I will promote her in just a moment. All right, Kathy, go ahead when you're ready.
Oh, okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, well, I just found out that the meeting was early, so I don't have my remarks prepared. But I do want to say that as a longtime advocate for low-income housing, and I was participating in the movement to do ADUs and SDUs 10 or 15, 20 years ago, speaking at meetings, public meetings about this, I just want to say I totally understand what you're trying to do with the housing scene. However, there is the lack of infrastructure that I've been noticing with streets being too narrow for parking. And I wanted to tell you, I was on the phone last week with a call with the state fire marshal. We take classes every year for our CE, education as realtors, and for the second year in a row, the woman teaching the class, Connie, could not answer the question about the problem with smoke alarms in tiny houses. And I said, well, you know, a tiny house could be 200, 400, 600 square feet, and you can't have the smoke alarm be so far away from the kitchen smoking, or your people will take out their batteries. And she said, well, I don't have any answer for that. Would you please contact the state? Well, I did that last year, and nobody responded to me. So there is no safety for these houses, is what I'm saying, as we have urban infill or new urbanism take place. And another thing is, I've been trying to reach out to you, and nobody's responded about the need to move toward the fireproof, rodent-proof, termite-proof, and mold-proof housing called hemp housing.
Kathy?
Go ahead.
Is this addressing middle housing?
Oh, yes, it is.
Okay.
The middle housing is too congested, and we should be using fireproof housing like hempcrete, hemp blocks, hemp panels, hemp bricks, and hemp cips, which is structural integrated panels. And this is the only way we should be building so close to each other in this time, because we are going to have another conflagration. You also should know that the wireless smart meters that we've allowed in this town is 24/7 degrading the electric wire in our houses and the power lines and going to exacerbate the fires and explosions that were already submitted over a decade ago to E-Web and trying to convince them that we shouldn't be putting those in. So there's multiple problems that have not been addressed.
Thank you, Kathy. Your time is concluded. Our next speaker this evening is Tiffany Edwards, followed by Eliza Kishinsky.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I'm Tiffany Edwards, Vice President of Policy and Community Development with the Eugene Chamber of Commerce. The chamber has been a staunch supporter of increasing housing diversity, affordability, and availability in our community. Middle housing is one of the most important tools that have, has enabled Eugene to begin to address this. We chose to go beyond the state's minimum standards and model code through a robust community engagement process. Where we ended up was with a policy that recognized our unique community and went further to really address our housing needs. Eugene remains the second most constrained housing market in the country, so our action needed to reflect the need. Eugene also ranks number one in the U.S. per capita homelessness, and extensive data tells us that the key to solving homelessness is housing. Moving forward to re-adopt Eugene's middle housing code provides certainty for a path forward to those who wish to contribute solutions rather than constant barriers to providing new homes for the people of Eugene. It's critical to supporting a thriving economy, and it goes without saying that we support the readoption of Eugene's middle housing code. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. Our next and final speaker for this topic is Eliza Kishinsky.
Hello, I'm Eliza Kishinsky. I live in Ward One. I am maybe disappointed to have the opportunity to talk to you yet again about middle housing. However, what I will say is that I strongly support re-adopting this code. I will not repeat the arguments that have been made before and that several previous speakers made very eloquently, but I very much appreciated this council's taking seriously the housing crisis that we're facing, the housing shortage that we're facing, the proactive action that was taken by adopting the middle housing code initially, and recognizing that we need to keep working through all of these small sort of pieces there. When the code was originally remanded, the Court of Appeals said in relationship to goal 11 that ways to achieve compliance with goal 11 included adopting provisions similar to those in the model code that limit middle housing on lots that lack sufficient infrastructure. And that's basically a direct quote from the Court of Appeals' decision. What this code before you does is adopt provisions that are not just similar to what's in the model code, but identical to what's in the model code. And so I would urge you to move forward and to let us use this new code to, to help create the housing our community so desperately needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Eliza. Mayor, that was our final speaking for this, final speaker for this hearing.
Thank you so much. With that, I close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from the city council? Council Groves?
Thank you, Mayor. City manager, I'm not expecting an answer to this tonight, but would it be possible to get some information about what the criterion is for determining whether the infrastructure is adequate? I mean, I'm sure, I'm not looking for an engineering study, but just so that we, you know, have confidence that this is clear and objective, an objective measure of the capacity. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. If there are no other questions or comments from council, we will move on to our third public hearing of the evening and the fire service fee. And I will again turn to the city manager to introduce the topic.
Thank you. This public hearing is an opportunity for the community to provide feedback to the Eugene City Council on the proposed ordinance that would establish a fire services fee. The fire service fee would be assessed on developed property and be based on the square footage of buildings associated with a stormwater account. The median residential home would pay $10 per month, and the median commercial customer would pay $38 per month. The fee as proposed would generate $10 million for fire and emergency medical services, providing dedicated funding for 8 million in existing services and the capacity to add an additional 2 million in expanded services. A special revenue fund would be established to account for fire service fee revenues and fire and EMS expenditures paid for from this revenue source.
Okay, thank you very much. And as I prepare to open the public hearing, I just want to remind everyone that you must speak on the topic of this fire service fee. So if you have more general comments, you can do that at a public comment meeting next week, but this is about the fire service fee. And with that, I open the public hearing and turn it over to staff to show the list of speakers.
Thank you, Mayor. We have 10 speakers for this topic. If you have signed up to speak via Zoom, please take this time to ensure that your screen name in Zoom includes your last name and matches the name you used to sign up to speak. If your screen name does not match, we cannot allow you to speak when it is your turn. I will announce two speakers' names at a time. When you are called to speak, please state your name and your ward or neighborhood, if known, before beginning your comments. If you are providing testimony via Zoom, when it is your turn, we will announce your name and allow you to speak. If you are announced as the next speaker and physically in the room, please move to the seat in the front row designated for the next speaker. When it is your turn, you may come to the podium. Please leave any bags you may have with you at your seat. If you have documents to give counsel, please place them in the basket near the podium. You will have two and a half minutes to speak. The timer will flash red when you have 15 seconds remaining to speak. Your microphone will be muted at the two and a half minute mark. Please note that the use of profanity is prohibited, and any instances of profanity will result in immediate termination of speaking privileges. Our first speaker this evening is Dani Patch, followed by David Vanderhagen.
Hello, I'm Dan Patch. And first of all, I want to say that nothing about what I'm saying is a referendum against firefighters. Everybody loves the fire department, that's for sure. But I believe that you are using the fire department as a fear-mongering tool to force us into compliance. Normally, when you have an operating levy, we vote on it. The people vote on it. And when you make a major purchase like this building, people vote on it. But you've denied that. You tore our last city hall down without our vote, and now you bought this one without our vote, and you don't have the money to make it operate. And you're trying to funnel funds away from normal things that are already designated, like firefighting protection. And you're trying to pay for your problem. You don't think we can see through that? And you're denying us our public right to vote. This is an escalating problem. I looked into it. You already did this to the parks and recreation, open spaces. That should be reversed immediately. When these things are done normally in the past, we get to vote on them. But you're using the fire department as a fear-mongering tool to scare us into compliance because you didn't allow us to vote on purchasing this building. That's really what this is about. It's not about the fire department. It's about your willingness, your want, to try to operate without public input. We recently voted on a county courthouse, and we voted it down. You didn't want that to happen. So now your way of doing it is to eliminate us so we don't get to vote. It's disgusting. You're deplorable. You have nothing to be proud about. You have everything to be shameful for. We have a right to vote on things, and you're denying that. That's what this is really about, funneling funds on this side and then scaring us into compliance.
Thank you, Dani. Our next speakers this evening are David Vanderhagen, followed by Catherine Dunn.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. My name is David Vanderhagen. I'm a resident of Ward Eight, raising my family here in Eugene. I understand how critically important programs and services are for our community, including fire and emergency services. And I want to make it absolutely clear that my concern today about the proposed fire protection fee in no way diminishes my strong support for our firefighters. They are vital to our city, and I fully recognize the essential work they do every day to protect and to serve Eugene. That said, I have concerns about the proposed fee. Labeling it as a fire fee seems misleading to community members as it is intended to fill a general fund gap rather than directly addressing fire-specific needs. It's also worth noting that 85% of the fire department's responses are medical, not fire-related, which raises questions about the appropriateness of this funding approach. Furthermore, the methodology behind the proposal fails to address the root causes of the budget deficit or provide clarity on where these shortfalls exist. Additionally, assessing the fee based on square footage is problematic. This method doesn't correlate with the services being rendered, particularly when 85% of responses are for emergency medical services. Larger businesses often already invest heavily in fire risk compliance and prevention measures, and they typically don't generate a proportional number of fire-related responses. This approach feels inequitable and doesn't reflect the actual use of fire and emergency services. I encourage the council to reconsider this fee and explore a solution that leads to the desired outcome, one that is clear, transparent, and beneficial for all parties. If costing the community more, it should lead to increased benefits, and it is critical that this is communicated clearly and equitably at all levels. Let's work together to support essential services in a way that avoids placing undue burdens on businesses or not addressing the underlying issues. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, David. Our next speakers this evening are Catherine Dunn, followed by Chris Seaworth. Catherine, go ahead when you're ready.
Thank you. Catherine Dunn, I live in Ward Five. I am also here to express concern about adding a fire service fee to the E-Web bills. It seems this approach blurs the distinction, the important distinction, between a fee and a tax. A fee should reflect payment for something that's measurable, something quantifiable, like water usage or trash collection. Taxes, on the other hand, should fund broader public services that are not quantifiable, like public safety, emergency response, et cetera. Currently, fire services are appropriately funded through the city's general fund, which recognizes the collective benefit of these services. If additional funding is needed, and I'm sure it is, I urge the city to be transparent and propose a tax increase rather than disguising it as a fee. This would uphold the integrity of public decision-making and allow residents a fair opportunity to voice their opinions. Trying to... Trying to sidestep a tax increase by tacking on a fee could undermine public trust and set a dangerous precedent. It's vital that our government remain transparent, equitable, and aligned with the principles of good governance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Catherine. Our next speaker is Chris Seaworth, followed by Lloyd Madden.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, City Manager, and City Counselors. My name is Chris Seaworth, and I am the President of Lane Professional Firefighters, Local 851 here, and I represent your Eugene Springfield firefighters. First, I want to express our appreciation for the time and effort that each of you have dedicated to exploring alternative revenue options. We recognize the complexity of this undertaking and appreciate the work you've invested in finding alternative solutions. The fire department is in a fragile state, and we have a responsibility to ensure that any funding measures provide real, long-term solutions, not just a Band-Aid. We're open to new revenue sources. We just want to make sure the fire fee is for long-term help and investment, which is why I stand before you today with some important questions to consider and clarify how this fire fee will be used. Our mission is to protect the safety of our community and our firefighters who put their lives on the line every day. Is there anything in this fee that will help improve our response times? Our response times have gone from four minutes up to seven. Will this fee ensure that we keep our engines staffed, or is the community going to lose an engine in the neighborhood fire station if it doesn't pass? To us, these are measurable safety concerns. How does this fee provide for the community and fire department's future? We're being told the fee will help solve challenges facing our city's budget and also help the fire department. I think we all need to pause and consider what really means for our community and our firefighters, paramedics, and EMTs. It's been mentioned that this funding might initially enhance service capacity by providing one squad 24 hours a day and maybe a couple of other squads for a handful of peak days. But we have three engines that rank among the busiest in the country. A two-person squad does little to relieve the demands or reduce those response times. So I ask you to consider if the fee genuinely addresses the underlying issues. Is this truly the fix we're looking for, or is it just another temporary measure? Really consider how this fee would reduce the overwhelming call volume on these engines and bring relief to the current crews. This fire fee could be the beginning of a stronger, better fire department, but I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to express our deep concerns about the about the future. Right now, we're struggling to retain employees and haven't advanced staffing levels since the 80s. We're tired, we're burnt out, and we need help. So I leave these questions with you to consider as you determine the next steps. Let's make sure we find solutions that give our firefighters and our community the support and safety they deserve and count on us to provide. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Our next speakers are Lloyd Madden, followed by John Borowski.
Lloyd Madden, Ward Four. Thank you for the opportunity to let me speak. I'm gonna sit down like this. So I come here as aware, as my ignorance of on this ordinance fee, whatever, listening to other people. I realize how complex it is and how difficult your jobs are, so I wish you the very best. I come here as both a longtime resident, I moved here in 1989, and also a businessperson. I've founded an organization here. Many people, family, friends, live in other states, and some of them say, wow, your property taxes are very high. And I look at them and I smile, and I say, you know what? They are, but you know why? Because of this, 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 and this. And so I just want to let you know that quality, to me, is much more important than quantity and otherwise. So to me, even though I won't speak to the funding mess and how, and it should be, I'm a huge fan of transparency, right? Let's make this transparency transparent in terms of how we fund this. But funding firefighters, funding schoolteachers, funding first policemen, all that, essential. I love living here. My whole business is about giving to this community and trying to make a stronger community. I've been here. When the forest fires, the ash was so much you had to have a filter and you had to tape up things. So it's only projected to get worse. So we have to figure out a way to fund, to make sure that they have the resources, and that there is incentive to be a firefighter. Hearing that people, it's hard to recruit, or people are burned out, I hate hearing that. Policeman, whatever, Eugene Library, you know, maybe it's going to be affected. These are really important services. So I just want to express to you that, as a resident here and someone who invests their time to try to make this community better, how important it is to me that this is a great community that we can use as a role model for the whole rest of the world. And so I'm an advocate. We'll figure out more effective ways to fund this in the future. So thanks a lot for your time.
Thank you, Lloyd. Our next speakers are John Borowski, followed by Kim R. Scott.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is John Borowski, and I'm here to testify about the proposed fire fee for city services. As you may know, I was one of the members of the committee that the City Manager had look at revenue options to fill current and upcoming needs, along with Councilor Zelenka and Councilor Leach. I believe that the committee did an excellent job of looking at all available sources of revenue, and I believe the one that the City Manager chose to move forward felt like the best choice for the parameters we were given. There are many reasons that I felt that way. However, there were others on the committee that didn't, that felt differently. I do believe that there are issues with the fee that you as Council must carefully consider. The thing that I want to stress the most in my testimony is the fact that this fee is not going to fix the structural problem facing our general fund going forward. At best, it will give you some time to do a deep dive into the needs and priorities that this community wants and can't afford. This is the third time that I've been involved in a revenue conversation, and each time it's been a hard conversation. This time was no different. The next process is going to be even more complicated, however. However, I know that there are people in the business community, as well as many other communities, that are ready to help with the challenges that we face in making sure that we keep Eugene as the place we choose to live, work, and play while balancing the limited amount of resources that the public can sustain. Keeping those in mind, I would encourage you to support the City Manager's recommendation to move forward with the proposed fire and emergency services fee. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Our next speakers are Kim R. Scott, followed by Marcello Fellino. Kim, go ahead when you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Counselors. My name is Kim R. Scott, and I live in Ward Seven. I've been a proud resident of Eugene for 26 years as a business owner working in the real estate industry, and I know how vital, strong services to our community are. When people decide to move to Eugene or continue to live here, livability and access to services are significant consideration. Equally important, however, are the relationships built within decision-makers and the transparency they see and how decisions are made. These factors provide assurance and confidence in choosing Eugene as home. While I fully support our firefighters and critical life-saving work that they do, I want to express my concern related to establishing this fee. In my role, I, along with others in the community, have felt that at times, the city has not been consistent with engaging in the public on important decisions like this. There have been many times that the city has effectively sought input. In other instances, decisions and decisions move forward without sufficient opportunity for meaningful participation. This inconsistency can jeopardize trust within the community. In this instance, with other decisions related to fees, a collaborative process to identify and prioritize the services that matter most would greatly be greatly appreciated by the residents and property owners. This approach would ensure funding aligns with the needs and values of Eugene's community. Additionally, transparency about city fees for businesses and property owners is essential. Property owners are subject to a variety of fees, which often contribute to a significant financial burden on the community. This is especially not the time to increase that burden. For many, it's not just the amount of fees, but the lack of clarity in how they align with the city's priorities that cause frustration. Addressing this would go a long way towards building trust and ensuring the city's financial structure supports its residents and economic growth. In addition, there's a large concern about the funds being collected going into the general fund, which is not what the fee represents. Thank you for your time and our consideration in considering this perspective to deliberate in this important issue.
Thank you, Kim. Our next speakers are Marcello Fellino, followed by Tiffany Edwards.
Thank you, Council. Thank you all that have showed up for the support, and thank you to the community members that have also been voicing their opinion. Their support for us has been part of why we do what we do and why we sacrifice as much as we do. What I'm hearing from everyone else that's been testifying in this case is that these are misleading fees, right? It's a tax that's hidden as a fee. Your plan is to raise $10 million to allocate towards the fire department while withholding $8 million. A $2 million increase or a quick response unit is merely a Band-Aid on a department that is drowning. To us, to me personally, as a resident, sorry, Marcello Fellino, Ward Seven, to me personally, it feels like we're drowning and you're holding a banner asking for more money, yet none of that money's coming to help us. And we were all aware of the amount of help that we need currently. We don't need a quick response unit. We need three stations. We need more units on the street. We have personnel. That's amazing, and we really appreciate that. However, we can do better work, we can do more efficient work if we have the resources we need on the street. Those resources need to be strategically placed. We know where they need to be placed, and we're asking for that help. And this fire fee, if it goes into effect, please don't reallocate that $8 million away from the general fund. Please keep that fire fee in attendance with the fire service $8 million budget. That's all I have. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Marcello. Our next speakers are Tiffany Edwards, followed by Katie Wilgus.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'm Tiffany Edwards, resident of Ward Five, and I'm here today to speak on behalf of the Eugene Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the chamber, I want to begin by reaffirming our unwavering support for the dedicated men and women who serve our community in police, fire, and emergency services. These critical services are the backbone of public safety in Eugene, and it is in the spirit of support that I speak to you today. After presentations from staff, research, and extensive discussions among our members, we understand the need, as it has been communicated, and the challenge facing the city that prompted the proposed fire protection fee. However, the chamber cannot support the fee as proposed. I'd like to focus on three key concerns that emerged from our deliberations. First and foremost, fire protection is a core city service. Funding for such an essential function belongs in the city's general budget. Addressing general fund shortfalls by introducing a new separate fee for what should already be a budgetary priority sets a concerning precedent. It creates the illusion of solving the problem without addressing the structural issues within our current funding system. We urge the city to engage the community in a collaborative process to identify priorities and adopt a long-term, priority-based budgeting approach. The chamber is ready to actively participate in this discussion. Second, the process matters. When the City of Eugene proposed a payroll tax to increase public safety services, there were many, many months of robust and community engagement that was transparent and collaborative in its approach. That approach built trust with business and the residents and ultimately resulted in the chamber strongly backing that tax with the understanding that it would go back to the voters for renewal in 2027. We question why the same approach is not being applied here. Our concern is that a result of passing this fee without a broad understanding and level of support from the community is that it will jeopardize the chances of the community safety payroll tax passing when it goes to the voters, putting us in another difficult budgeting situation. Finally, this proposal risks harming our business community. Many local businesses are already burdened by the increasing taxes, fees, and regulatory changes. This growing financial strain makes it harder to attract and retain businesses, driving opportunities to neighboring communities that benefit from the property and payroll taxes that Eugene forfeits. The cycle only we-
Thank you, Tiffany. Your time is concluded. Our next and final speaker is Katie Wilgus.
Good evening, Mayor and City Counselors. My name is Katie Wilgus. I live in Ward Eight, and I've been proud to call Eugene home since 2020. I'm a native Oregonian with decades of experience working to address community livability, downtown vibrancy, and bringing stakeholders together to solve civic challenges. I'm here tonight as a community member and advocate to share my concerns about the proposed fire protection fee. First, I want to express my deep appreciation for our fire department and the critical life-saving services they provide. These services are vital to our community's safety and well-being, and I fully support ensuring they have the funding necessary to perform their essential work. That said, I believe the proposed fire protection fee is not the right path forward. Fire protection is a core service that should be funded as a priority through the city's general fund. Relying on a separate fee to fund this service shifts the burden disproportionately and risks further eroding trust with the business community. Generally, there have been discussions about approaching the city's budget differently with a focus on prioritizing essential services. I strongly encourage the city to adopt this kind of approach, ensuring sustainable, long-term funding for fire protection without relying on piecemeal solutions. In closing, I ask you to reconsider this fee and instead commit to a broader, more strategic approach to funding core services. Let's work together to create a budget that prioritizes what truly matters to our community in a way that's fair and equitable to all stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you, everyone, for speaking. And with that, I close the public hearing. And are there questions or comments from councilors? Anything you've heard? And seeing none, I think, oh, wait, I do, oh, sorry, I blocked it with my thing. Council Groves.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to everybody that showed up tonight to speak, listen, and lend support. Our fire department is a foundational service of this community, and I agree with the discussion about this should be funded out of our general fund. How we got to this point is, obviously, with our taxation structure in Oregon, the growth in property taxes is not keeping pace with the cost of delivering services, but that's across the city. It's not just the fire department. I expressed hesitancy and concern about this method of funding from the beginning, and I still have that today. I did vote to bring this to public hearing because I really wanted to hear what the public had to say. But I also said in the early days, you know, we need to have a robust community involvement process before we get to this point, and we haven't had that yet, and that concerns me as well. Trust is very fragile, and it's easily lost. And I understand some of the cynicism that I've heard tonight and from other people that I've talked with in the past week or so. I don't yet know where I'm going to land on this issue, but I am concerned. I know at the end of the day, right, wrong, or indifferent, I do support our firefighters and I do support our fire department. And I know for a fact that staffing has not changed since I came to work as a firefighter in this city in 1980. And watched the different iterations, we actually lost staffing for a while, but we got that back. That was during the first recession that we had in the early 80s. And a few of you in the audience were back in the service when I was, so I know you understand what I'm talking about. But, you know, again, I want to have more discussion about this. I expressed concern this morning with the mayor, and I know she has her perspective on this, which I respect, but it just, it feels rushed, and I know we have time limits that we have to be making decisions. But I also think it'd be very helpful if we could see what some of the cuts would look like if we do nothing. And I think that needs to be part of the decision-making process as we move forward. So thank you again for everybody who showed up tonight. We hear what you're saying. I'm certainly thinking- I'm certainly thinking about that, and thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to comment.
Yes, absolutely. Any other councilors with a comment? Thank you. I will just, I will just say that the council will be having a work session to discuss what they've heard at the public hearing on Wednesday, so there's an opportunity to circle back. And I would say to some of you who felt you haven't got information that the city's website actually has a very robust question and answer that would address some of the things that you've brought up today. So would encourage you to go to the city's website and take a look at that, and we'll have a council discussion on Wednesday. So with that, thank you very much for taking the time to testify and share your concerns. And with that, we are adjourned.